On record.
Welcome to City of Lincoln City City Council Work Session Meeting for November 30th, 2015. It's now 3:07 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are we not, I don't think the video is on. Is it supposed to be? Are we not videoized?
I thought that's what this was all about.
I don't think those are substituted.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on there.
It says we're not on air.
What are you not, are we getting a reflection?
Let me just check real quick.
I don't think we're on air.
Oh, I see the on air.
Now we are.
Now we are.
I didn't know that existed.
So maybe we should start over again.
There's something new. Okay, we're live.
All right.
All right, yes?
I'll start over.
Yeah.
You ready?
On record.
All right, we're gonna call to order one more time, the meeting, City of Lincoln City, City Council Work Session Meeting for November 30th, 2015. It's 3:08 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Mr. Chandler.
Okay, thank you again. I just wanted to mention to you, and for those who may be watching, that we have a substitute projectionist today. And he normally does not do this, so if it comes a little choppy and looks a little weird, it's because he's doing a little bit of learning on the job. We're again here to talk about vacation rental dwellings. And let me begin with the goals of what we hope to be able to accomplish. And actually, what I want to begin with is the goal number three. And that is to receive direction from you so that we, as the staff, can begin to prepare the documents that are necessary if there's going to be any amendments to the city's ordinances. Now, having said that, we'll discuss this a little bit more in detail as we talk about the process and where we end up. The other two goals of our meeting is, the first is to discuss another time limitation option. As you recall, in our last meeting, we discussed, that, the whole meeting was devoted to that. There's one other option I wanted to present to you today. And then also discuss the other options to address other issues that are associated with vacation rental dwellings in residential neighborhoods. So just a little bit of a summary. If you recall, in our last meeting, we had four questions that we asked you. We did not come to a consensus on any of these questions. The first of those is, should the city eliminate the accessory use provision? Again, we did not come to a consensus on that. The next questions really are dependent upon how you answer that first question. And they are, should the city council define accessory use? Should the city adopt a prior use exception? And should the city permit new vacation rental zones? And we'll come back to those before the end of the meeting. So the other time limitation option that we wanted to present to you today is the question of whether or not the city should reduce the max, I'm sorry, of whether or not the city should create areas which are, which have a much more restricted vacation, or, I'm sorry, that would have a much more restricted number of nights that they can rent accessory use. If you recall, some time ago, I gave to you a map. I used this during the presentations we had during the summer. It showed where the vacation rental dwellings are located. I've superimposed that on the zoning map that you see before you and up on the screen. Now, the thing that's interesting is, just to highlight a few things, the black squares, rectangles that you see, those are vacation rental, currently licensed vacation rental dwellings, okay? The colors that you see throughout here are the different zones, right? Of course, is general commercial. Yellow is R175. Green is open space and so forth. They go through all of the different ones. What is interesting to note in this, and we've had quite a bit of, there's, we've had quite a bit of discussion on the market and what the market is doing and what the market has done. There's also been a question that has been periodically asked, and that is, or a statement, and that's that there are really no VRD-free areas within the, within our community. And so, as we took a look at this map, and we began to ask ourselves, what are the patterns that we're seeing, you'll notice that in our largest residential areas, which is the yellow zones, that is an R175, there are only 12 VRDs that are located in that. You have another residential area that's called recreation rental, that is here in this area, and then another one down in this area, of which there is only one. So the question that we began to ask ourselves is that, is there a possibility of creating areas where you can have more nights to rent and areas where you can have less? There's a couple of options that have come from this. The first is the villages, which is this area up in here, which the city owns, 363 acres of property. You control that property, and therefore, you could make it an entirely VRD-free zone, where they are not permitted. The second option is, when you look at this, is not to eliminate the VRD from any particular zone, but reduce the accessory use in those to a much smaller number, say 30 to 45 days. And when you look at this, your yellow R175 zone becomes a key candidate for being able to do that. One of the things that struck me as I looked at this was the fact that the market has already, has already made that out to be. The market has indicated that these areas, which are R15, some general commercial roads in, are the places where VRDs are being bought and sold and developed. In the other areas, such as the large yellow areas, the R175, we're not seeing the demand for that. Now, the question was asked, as I posed this to some folks, the question is asked, well, why not just let the market dictate it? Why put a restriction on a land use? Well, the reason is because it is land use. Land use is not a, markets change over time. Markets can be fickle. People base their buying decisions on land use maps. And so if somebody's coming into town and they are interested in developing property that has a VRD potential, a large VRD potential, such as eliminating the accessory use or giving it a very high number, you can look on this map and identify where it would be. If they want to buy a property in an area where the VRDs are limited to a much greater extent, then they can also look on the land use map and see where those area would be. It's a very traditional approach to land use and zoning. And so that's another time limitation option that we wanted to present to you today, again, for your consideration as you consider all of these issues that are before you. Any questions on that before I proceed to the next set of topics?
Is there any way, Ron, when you're showing us these, that you can enlarge those? I don't need it right this minute, but for future maps, because it's really hard to see.
Yes, I can give you a larger, matter of fact, let me do this. Actually, I had one handout, and I forgot to give it to you.
I'd much appreciate it for all of us.
That's a lot of work in this one.
I appreciate that.
Did you have one?
I got one, yeah.
Would you mind reading that?
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
On the second page of your, of your work meeting handout, we've got 21 VRDs listed in the planned industrial zone?
Yes.
Could you point that out on the map for me, please?
I think you have one of those maps back, so I can make sure I.
Right there. Dark purple, I believe.
P1.
P1. Okay.
The dark purple that I see are these areas right in here.
All right. Thank you.
That is so much easier to read. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I didn't give this to you.
Now, there is one thing that I will point out, is that you're looking at the map. If you look at this area right here, there's a lot of VRDs, and it is yellow, R175, on this map. But that's only because that map has not been updated. This is now a VR zone.
All right, that was given my question. And Ron, I know Richard's not here, but as I'm looking at the VRD app in process, I'm seeing 1, 2, 3, 4, and VRD, kind of a little blue with yellowy stripes. So I've got three up at the north end.
Which zone are you talking about, Mayor?
The VRD app in progress. So here, and your legend. And so I'm seeing three up here, one down here, and then maybe just one, I just wanna see if that's an accurate reflection.
I believe that is correct.
Okay, so there's four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, there's another one sneaking in up there. Five.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question. If an application is made for a VR, VRD in a VR zone, do they still have to have the publication of the information to the surrounding owners within 200 feet?
They would.
So they still go through the same process, even though it's, it's an outright use?
Um, well, yes, I do believe that is correct, because there is more to the licensing than the number of, than the number of days. So yes, they would still have to go through the licensing process.
Good, thank you.
Now, just in summary, tying all that you have discussed in the last meeting plus today, so when you look at accessory use, there's several options. And we'll discuss these more in detail as we get to the point where we're trying to really get the direction from you. And that is that you certainly can just leave things the way they are and not do anything, and we would abide by the ordinances that exist right now. The second is that you can eliminate accessory use completely. If you do that, that eliminates the need for a VR zone. The next thing that you could do is that you could keep an accessory use and define what that number would be. And, or you allow the staff to define what that number would be. And then the next option is the one that we were just discussing, where you would open it up to more days of rentals in some areas and less days of rentals in others, such as you see on this map, where you could look at the R175 in the RR zone as a very limited number of days that would be rented. So we'll come back to those a little bit more as we talk about, as we try to ascertain where you want to go with, with these decisions. So, Mr. Mayor, are we ready to move to the next subject?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next few items that we're going to discuss all pertain to the other effects or the other impacts that a VRD can have in a residential neighborhood. As you recall, most VRDs are in a residential neighborhood, and therefore, they certainly do have an impact. And, and the, the things that we're going to propose today, hopefully, they will be things that will address those impacts. So the first question is, is should the city reduce the maximum occupancy limitation? There are two ways in which the occupancy is determined. Prior to 2010, it was based upon the number of rooms and the square footage of those rooms. Beginning in 2000, towards the end of 2010, there was a cap that was put on of 16. 300 of our currently licensed VRDs fall into that, into that 2010 above limitation, which is 16. When I went and calculated to look at what is the potential maximum occupancy for those 300 units, it is, or for those 300 licensed VRDs, it is 4,800. Now, people who would be able to stay. Now, that's assuming that they are fully occupied, okay? That's, and that, I should point out, that's a big assumption. There will certainly be days where that may be true, and there certainly will be days where that may not be true. But for the discussion purposes, there is the potential of 4,800 people who would be coming into our city for those 300 licensed VRDs. If you were to use the Newport model, which is two per bedroom plus two, that would, that would reduce the number of people that would be coming into those 300 VRDs down to 2,712. If you look to, if you calculated it using two per bedroom plus one, then it would drop it down to, by another 300, down to 2,412. Now, the reason that this has come up, as we began to look at it, is we began, began to look at what are the actual problems that residential neighborhoods experience because of VRDs. And that certainly is traffic, it's congestion, it's parking, and, and it can be the number of people that are coming in and out of the neighborhoods in any given evening. So the idea of reducing the occupancy is a way to address those that simply coming up with a time limitation won't address. So we, we also, Council Ward has been helping me a little bit with this and looking to other communities. And Seaside also has a limitation that's very similar to this. Of course, I mentioned Newports. I do have a phone call into the county. I know that they are looking at an occupancy maximum, but I don't know what that is at the point of this meeting. So anyway, so the idea is that this is a way of addressing the other issues that come by putting a VRD into a residential neighborhood.
Quick question, if I might.
Mm-hmm.
What's an occupant?
This would be, an occupant is defined as the people who are staying, and the number of people are staying.
Is it a newborn baby?
It would be any person.
Twins?
It would be any, any breathing human. So, two twins counts as two people.
So two people couldn't have two kids in the same bedroom with them?
That would be four. It's two per, the total would be based on two per bedroom plus two.
But there's also a two plus one option.
There's also a two plus one. So you would have, for example, if you have four bedrooms, that would be 10 people that could occupy that VRD. Nine people if you took the two plus one.
Then would that cover anyone who had a caretaker?
What do you mean, a caretaker? Somebody living in the home?
Yeah, if someone needed an ambulatory service, someone needed a full-time caretaker. Is that caretaker included in that number?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm just splitting hairs here, but I'm curious.
My guess is, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but my guess is that yes, it would be. If they are coming into the home to stay, they would be counted as one of the occupants. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Seaside, when they did theirs, they just have a flat three-person per bedroom. And the reason they did that is in case someone had a child. So when you, when you figure the plus one, the plus one is actually to cover a child or a caretaker, or something like that.
There, anyway, any other questions on this?
Do we have a limitation on the number of bedrooms?
Five.
So with the two per bedroom plus one, there would just be maximum 11 people?
It would be.
Well, no, because you'd have, if you had five bedrooms, that'd be 10 people, plus one in each bedroom, so it'd be 15.
No, it's plus one.
One per house.
Just an extra person?
An extra person.
So, going along that same line, if you have five bedrooms and, say, a height of bed or a wall bed in the living room, it's not a bedroom. Now, so how do you count that? Do you count it?
We would, we would count them as bedrooms. The definition of a bedroom.
So the living room would be theoretically a bedroom?
Theoretically, I guess you could. That would be something that would have to come up into an interpretation by our, by our planning director.
Many motels, I know, I can't say for all of them, but many motels use that same formula, two persons per bed. And that includes children unless they are under a year. They figure if they're under a year, they're going to have a crib or something, so they don't count in the total. So, I mean, a lot of motels use that as their, as their maximum, or their maximum occupancy of a sleeping area, but it goes on beds rather than bedrooms. Because, for instance, the place where I work, we have either a height of bed or a wall bed in the living room. Some of them have two height of beds, or a wall bed and a height of bed, so the occupancy is six. In those units, as opposed to, if you're limiting it to just the bedroom, those, none of those units could sleep more than two people. So that's, that's kind of a, an area, I know it's kind of gray, but there's, that's the way, a good share of the motels count that, is per bed as opposed to per bedroom.
Now, we do have a limitation now, and it's based upon the size of the bedroom. Two people for 70 square feet of a bedroom. If you increase it by 50 square feet, you get another person that can be added to that room. That applies to all the RDs. However, beginning in 2010, we did put a maximum of 16. So we, we do use a formula that is based upon the number of bedrooms, people in the bedrooms, and the size of the bedrooms.
And we're also determining that people in the home are actually spending the night?
What do you mean?
We're not saying in occupancy, you can't have guests, and then they leave at 10, or, I mean, how are we gonna determine that they've left for the night? And, you know, this is my frustration with this whole thing, that we're, we're just, we're just painting ourselves into a corner with this again. It is, we're just continually gonna dance around with what ifs, what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. And I can what if this thing all day. If we're gonna say you can have this many people in the home ever, period, no matter what you're doing, sitting, standing, sleeping, or do we say, okay, you can only have 15 people sleeping there, and that's gonna be between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when are you gonna determine that they're actually staying there and didn't just fall asleep in the chair? You know, I mean, all these silly little things that we've all of a sudden made someone a criminal for. And I just, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've heard that this occupancy works for Newport, and that it's a simple plan. And it appears as though the county is going to come into some type of line with that. And, and our, our next competitor would be Seaside, and they're fully use that, that system. And there's been an outcry to do something simple and to emulate Newport. And one of the things that we have to be careful of, that you can say is, well, you know, I've reduced my occupancy by however many, you know, they're just gonna go to Newport. Well, Newport has the same rules. They're gonna go to the county. Well, the county has the same rules. They're gonna go to Seaside. Well, the Seaside has the same rules. So part of a successful program has to integrate with the, with the areas around you, so there isn't that push and pull. So, for that reason, it's, it's an attractive alternative. And you can look online to see if you're, the house that you're renting has one or two, three bedrooms. That's all with the county, you know. And, and you can see, if you just go into Home, something like HomeAway, you can see where people list the amount of bedrooms that they have and the master, the maximum occupancy that they have. So it's easy to regulate, and it's working for the other communities. So that's my two cents worth on that.
I do believe that every VRD ordinance that I have read throughout the country has an occupancy limit. I can't think of one that did not have an occupancy limitation, including ours.
And also, when we look at houses, you know, when we have the problem, say, well, we have a problem with this VRD. Well, VRD is just a house, so how can you have a problem with a house? It's the people inside it that, that bring benefit and detriment to that. So if you're having noise issue, if you have less people in the house, you're less likely to have a noise issue. So it is kind of self-limiting as far as parking and noise and those types of things. I thought, you know, there was a, a call out to look at the Newport plan, and I was kind of agreed. I, I'm impressed with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First of all, is the five-bedroom limit our ordinance, or is that the health and safety standard of the state? Or how, how has that arrived at?
That was the construction board, wasn't it?
Richard, can you help me on that one?
There is a definition of lodging house in the state law. It's both in the residential code as well as the structural code, the commercial code and the residential code. And it's essentially five guest rooms. We've basically interpreted guest rooms as being rooms for sleeping bedrooms. That was probably in place in the early 70s. In, I believe it's July of 2010, the state attempted to address the problem of large bedrooms, guest rooms, basically having rows of beds. And they actually placed the 16 limitation in place in, in July of 2010. And so the way the state enforces that is, any building built after July 2010 has that 16 occupancy limit, but they do not go back and apply it to buildings built before that. Now, our code- Now, our code simply said we would enforce the state law, so we specifically referenced that in our license ordinance.
So, why do we have a five-bedroom limit then?
We, we, because that limitation has existed since the seventies. And so, we, we say, in order to get a license, you have to comply with that limitation. So, if you ask for six-bedroom VRD, you will not get it, because the state law has basically said since the seventies, you can only have five rooms if you're going to rent the rooms.
But if you're allowed up to sixteen people, and with five bedrooms, you can only have eleven, then what?
Well, nothing. In fact, the state recommended, as did I, that we adopt our own limitation, which could be more restrictive than the sixteen-person limitation in the state law.
Now, our limitation, though, is based upon the size of the bedroom with a maximum of sixteen. You can have two people for a seventy-square-foot bedroom. If you add fifty square feet, you can have a third person in that room. If you have, add a hundred square feet, you can add a fourth person in that bedroom, up to a maximum of sixteen occupants.
We have, we have two limitations. We have the limitation of the 1997 Housing Code, which we adopted by reference in chapter fifteen, plus we have the limitation of the state residential code, which is sixteen for a, a home, basically that was built to residential standards.
Okay, so what are the, what are these other cities adopted then? Are they also the same as we are, as far as number of bedrooms, or number of occupants? Or, it sounds like Newport is two per bedroom and plus one, so do they have an upwards limitation?
I'm, I'm not- Newport's two plus two.
That's what, two, oh, two plus two, okay. Well, two plus two are one. That's only one person. I'm just thinking of bedrooms. Does Seaside have a limit of bedrooms?
I'm not aware of that.
They do have a-
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. Keep, keep it for here.
They do have, it's three per bedroom, and after 2010, it has a cap of ten people.
Okay.
With a maximum of ten, but before 2010, it's a cap of sixteen.
Okay.
That's my recollection, I, you know.
The reason I'm asking is, you're talking about standardization. I think that if you're trying to standardize this thing up and down the coast, that's the thing you need to do, is to make sure that we are standardizing.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Counselor Ryan, with regard to beds as opposed to bedrooms, my fear would be that people could put as many beds as they liked into a bedroom.
I agree that, for instance, you could create a dorm room and have a number of beds in it. But I, you know, I'm not opposed to the sixteen limitation. I was just, for the sake of argument, as far as figuring out how many people, if you have a bedroom, a house that has a bedroom and say a height of bed in the living room, theoretically, if you're only counting bedrooms, you can only have two people in there, but in reality, you can have four people in there very comfortably, and that's all I was saying. So, it was just recognizing the fact that there is a height of bed or a wall bed in the living room, is, which is not considered a bedroom, but it does allow two more people, or three, or four, however you want it. However, the, the thing is, you would still have the maximum of five bedrooms and/or sixteen people. You would still have that limitation. You know, I don't have an issue with that at all. But, I was just, you can have a very, a nice house with one bedroom and a, and a height of bed in the living room, and again, like I said, that four people can be there very comfortably. So, but under the current ordinance, you would be limited to two.
Well, it sounds like we agree that we should, if we're going to control occupancy, we could, we should label it bedroom as opposed to bed.
No, I'm, I'm thinking that we should, well, whatever. Frank, yeah.
So, we don't agree?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Also, I agree, Mr. Chandler, that this occupancy recommendation has the potential of reducing congestion, traffic, and parking. In addition to that, it's a licensing regulation as opposed to a land use regulation, correct?
This, the, the occupancy is dealt with in the licensing part of our ordinance, if I understand your question.
And it's not a land use issue?
It's a licensing issue.
Thank you.
Well, I'll throw my two cents in as a vacation rental owner. As far as the traffic goes, you have to differentiate between the occupants. Now, normally, we see more kids than adults in ours, and we see that in a lot of vacation rentals. That's why they're here. It's a family destination. It's a family rental. It's not the single people showing up for these. Occasionally, they are, but it's a family, so it's, let's just say, nuclear family, mom, dad, a couple of kids, and their friends. The kids are not jumping into the car and driving off to the mall. It's just not going to happen. They're walking to the beach. They're, you know, they go as a unit, because they got to bring the kids. So, that's the one thing I want to just make sure we're discussing. This is not just a group of adults showing up all the time. It is occasionally, but my experience has been, it's families. And again, the kids will outnumber the adults every time.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that being the case, whether that's the case or not, I think that if we are considering eliminating accessory use, that we have to provide some kind of relief to the neighborhoods. I do not believe that we can just abandon the neighborhood to VRDs.
No, and I agree. I'm just addressing the, the supposition that it, we have an increase in traffic based on occupancy, when the occupancy-
It has the potential of reducing traffic.
It's got a lot of potentials, but again, we don't have any information that says, here's the average makeup of a, of a, someone who stayed. So, we really can't say, and we have no information on trips. We have no information on traffic. We have nothing except anecdotal, so I'm sharing my anecdotal information.
I think what we do have is a shrinkage of numbers, and if we decide to limit occupancy. I think that's a fact.
Yeah, obviously.
So, and that's, that's given fewer people, I'm going to assume there are going to be fewer cars and less disturbance in the neighborhood.
Again-
It may or may not be true.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree. I'm going to disagree that, I'm not thinking we're going to have any less impact with cars. We just want to have the guests. And that's just, has been my concern from day one, is just the, the total lack of any kind of real data. Again, if we just, well, I think, I hope, I wish, maybe, potentially, you know, we're just, we're just making stuff up as we go.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Given that concern, since this is a discussion item, and that, that's all we're, we're doing here, is discussing, I guess I'm, I haven't heard anything, maybe from you, that you could put forth. What would you, in essence, be willing to give up, or the industry be willing to give up, as, as Mr. Narikis alluded to, for the neighborhood? What, what, if we can conclude hypothetically that accessory use goes out the window, and that's, that's what this part of the discussion is about, absent hardcore facts that you've talked about, does it matter then? Or what could you give up, or what could we give to the neighborhood that might make them feel better about that kind of decision, giving up with accessory use?
Well, I guess the first thing I'd say would be enforcement of existing regulations. And then, with the removal of, of any license from someone who violates those rules. That'd be my first.
Well-
Get rid of it.
Okay, so, name, name the rules. What, what would you enforce?
Well, if we have parking rules, if those are violated, if we have noise violations, if we have trash violations, if we have, you know, any number that are on our books already that we could enforce and say, you know, we, someone lost a license a year and a half, two years ago, simply because they had a, a fire pit in the garage that didn't get removed like it was supposed to get removed. You know, they, they lost their license. So, we can do it.
As I recall, it was the noise, not the fire pit.
No, it was about the smoke, and they were told to get rid of the fire pit, and they hung it in the garage, and then the subsequent inspection said, you didn't get rid of it. And at least that's what I recall, was that it was the smoke, apparently.
Yeah.
So, it's not mine to give up. I don't, I-
Well, we're, it is, you know, in a form of discussion here, we've got to find some way to find, I think, find some middle ground.
Right.
And I think the point is being made that some of these issues, I think Mr. Ward brought it up, that these are all issues that are kind of people-related, and if somehow we can control people, bingo. I share that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's, that, of course, is, you know, strong management, rules, clear rules, that kind of stuff to enforce. And, and I don't, I think that's been one of the problems. We don't have that clarity, or haven't, haven't had that clarity, for you to say, well, just enforce the rules. You know, it's not, they're, they're not as clear as you and I would like, thus leaving a lot of room for, well, subjective stuff.
Well, for me, it's been pretty clear. I know that if someone's parking up front of my place, I can get a thousand-dollar ticket. That's pretty clear, you know? And I know that if I get complaints from neighbors about noise, and whether it's through police or through code enforcement, that's pretty clear.
What, but see, I, I would disagree with you again. Given one license removal and all the noise around it, it doesn't seem that, you know, back to your point of enforce.
Well, so I guess what I'm, what you're after is for me to name a number, that, whether in days or occupancy?
I'm, I'm looking for some things. I, I think the way this discussion was going was throwing something on the table that, that, if the, you raised the question on the last work session about what, what if we just throw out accessory use? I think that's a good question. Put it on the table. And what I'm hearing is, you know, some concerns about just throwing it out without any kind of conditions, or, you know, something, you know, giving to the neighborhood, livability. How, how would throwing out accessory use improve livability for the neighbor? And that, that's where I think Mr. Ward then brought the idea of occupancy, and so we're kind of banging that around. And what I hear, what I would take away from what you've said is, no, you'll leave it at sixteen, because, you know, people don't make noise or don't cause issues. I, I don't know. Or that's the, not the right trigger.
Well, that, that's not what I said. So, you're asking me what I can concede, and I, I decided I have nothing to concede. It's not my role to do that, but I, I guess my concern, let's see if I can say this correctly, is, ah, I've lost my train here. I'll leave, I'm sorry, I lost my thought.
Yeah. Well, if I can interject in here. The, if, if, if I understand what we were discussing about the, the occupancy per bedroom, you know, I just brought up the bed thing as a, as a way that most motels measure infants. They don't count them as a person in a bed, because they're not. I was just bringing that up. But I kind of like the Newport model, the two-per-bedroom plus two. That would take into effect, if you have a, a height of bed in the living room or whatever, there's your other two people. And so, I, I don't have an issue with that. And if you have a maximum of sixteen people, you, if you're two-per-bedroom plus two, you know, I think that's, that's a pretty good limitation, because you can't put sixteen people in there that are spending the night. And I think that's the, that's the other key that I'm, I'm hearing the mayor say, is, you know, is this visitors, or are these people who are staying the occup, actual occupants? And it has to be actual occupants, in my mind. Just because somebody comes and visits, a family member comes and visits during the day, doesn't, to me, put a limitation on how many people can be in the house. It's a matter of how many people are staying in the house.
I was just being a little facetious.
Well, no, but I mean, I think that's a good point. You know, motels have a room max, most of them, but that doesn't prevent people who live here in town, their relatives coming and visiting with them during the day and then leaving, because you still only have X amount of people in that room, which is what they paid for. And I, I think that's the issue. And so, if, if we went with the Newport model of two-per-bedroom plus two, and you cannot have more than sixteen people or five bedrooms, which is what we have adopted under state law, then I, I think that's, that's a pretty darn good limitation right there. And I agree with, with Counselor Anderson, you know, on some of this other stuff. If, if we are going to, and I would highly recommend that we drop the, the accessory use. I think it's, it's too hard to define, well, it's, it's hard to define, and it's very hard to try to figure out how exactly you're going to enforce it. So, I think that one should be eliminated. But by eliminating that, then you do make sure that the trash is in an orderly manner, just like you would on the next door neighbor. The parking restrictions, which would be the same as the next door neighbor, essentially. You know, noise, same as the next door neighbor, who might, is a full-time resident. These are the kind of things, then, then it becomes easier, because if they violate any of those, then they can, you know, possibly lose their license, and then they will be the neighbor. The other, darn it, I just did the same thing you did. Shucks. There was one more thing that I was going to address, and, and now I have just completely blanked it out. So, but anyway, I, I think that's, that would be a good start on solving this whole process, is, and, and making it enforceable. Oh, the other one, was making sure that there is a contact person, whether it's a, an agency or the owner, who can immediately respond. And by immediately, usually within twenty minutes, respond to a situation and be responsible. I liked your idea for the call center. I think that's a wonderful idea. I still think it's a good idea to have the neighborhood know what that number for the, the person that's going to be taking care of it. But, you know, I mean, we have, the villages at Cascadehead, which I think we've already discussed several times, that we wanted to keep that, we probably wanted to keep that VRD free. And if you do that with the rest of the seven-point-five, isn't it, R-seven-point-five, except for the few that are there, your grandfather goes in until they terminate, I think we, you know, we can cut this whole discussion down and, and end this whole process. Now, is that going to make everybody happy? Nope. Is it going to make everybody mad? Nope. But, you know, I think it's a good compromise that would work. But we have to be able to have the enforcement will to enforce on VRDs the same, but also, we need to enforce that on the next door neighbor who is a full-time resident, not just the VRD. And unfortunately, I see a lot of full-time residents that violate things all the time and get away with it. But if you were a VRD, you'd get nailed for it.
Right.
And I think that's unfair, and I think that's part of the issue. Like I said, I'm, I'm one of the people who began the authorization or authored this, this, the VRD ordinance, and over time, I have figured out that some of the things- over time, I have figured out that some of the things that we didn't do needed to have been done then, but then the world changed. So maybe at the time, they were fine, but now they are not. So anyway, that's my 18 cents worth.
A bunch of thoughts. First of all, I think a VRD is a business and I think we need to recognize it as, as a business. Secondly, in December of 2014, the council at that time directed the city manager to enforce VRDs and they have not been since that time. As a result, we partially find ourselves in the situation where we are now. I'm a fan of accessory use, but I hate it because we can't define it the way it needs to be defined. So I've come to the conclusion, and I hate to say this, but I've come to a conclusion. I think the city manager is right that the market has dictated where VRDs seem to be located. If you look at that map, you can see it. Practically everything west of Highway 101 is proliferated with VRDs and east of 101, very few. I've almost come to the, I say almost, but I've almost come to the conclusion that a solution may be that we just take everything west of Highway 101 and we can call it a VR zone if you want, which means you have outright use. Of course, still to the restrictions of the number of bedrooms, that sort of thing. And then on the east side, where it's 175, we could limit that to something like 30 days. We've only got 12, I think it is, on the east side. We could grandfather them in at where they are now. We could go ahead and use the 30-day restriction, not have an accessory use, but call it a restriction on the properties east of 101. And I understand that that doesn't make all parties win, but I don't think there's any way to make all parties win in this whole situation. I think we're going to have winners and losers.
Absolutely.
Question is, how many winners and how many losers? And I think the more winners, the better. And so perhaps what I'm suggesting is, not an ideal situation, but maybe one that'll work.
Very well said. Thank you.
My only concern with the R 175 restriction is lakefront.
Right.
And I think that lakefront is just as VRD friendly or appropriate as oceanfront. So I, there's, there's a few little exceptions and...
Would you apply Mr. Ward's one block plus one?
Yeah, I mean, I think...
When I lived on the lake, I lived in an RC zone.
Yeah.
Which allowed outright use.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't have any problem with the actual lakefront itself. I don't want to be going back behind that. My concern is, we need to preserve the neighborhoods we've got now that are left.
At least the street that borders it. Because, so you've got the lakefront plus one.
I'm just talking about the lakefront, period. That's it.
Because there are those people I know, when I've driven, say, like, the Blaise and such, you know, they have access to a boat ramp and so they have their boats.
Yeah, but do they have an RV on the other side? See, there aren't any existing right now. So obviously, the market hasn't, hasn't directed that.
Right.
So I think that I would be willing to amend what I just said to include the lakefront.
I'd like to comment on that. The lakefront is different than the ocean in that I think that any, any license for a VRD, lakefront property needs to be on sewer.
Yeah.
Cannot load those properties up and have that go into the lake.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And then second of all, when we're doing our count, if we're, you have to have a trigger point that makes you able to get to 16 people. Because how are you going to count that if you do five bedrooms at, two per bedroom is 10, plus one is 11. So now how do you get from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 16? What's the trigger point? And how does that work? Is it a date that you go back from? Or is it the size of the house? Maybe S is 3,500 square feet and you can put more, reasonably put more people in it for that if they have the parking. So you have to have a methodology to get to those maximums, whatever we determine them to be.
And I guess I'd like to kind of get back to the occupancy thing. One concern I have is, is what we've talked about with the change in travel. And it's more family oriented. It's more short trip oriented. And I don't want to see a family go somewhere else. And I'm saying, I'm sure if Newport cuts them off and Astoria cuts them off, or Seaside, well, then do they go to Sun River? Do they go somewhere else where they can get in? I just, I would like to see some kind of allowance for children. That, you just, you can't call a kid an adult. You know, again, anecdotally, mine just slept on the floor. They didn't use a bed. Stack them like cordwood, you know, they're just, they're happy and...
If you enter the black light, I don't think you let them sleep on the floor.
Well, they did with us anyway. And so I'd just like to see some kind of allowance that says, it's not the same as an adult, so that families will come. You know, whatever age we cut that off at, if you have, you know, under 10.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I agree with that. I definitely don't want to see an infant under one counted as an occupant. And I have a problem with, like, under 10 also.
Okay, and that's fine. Because again, I'm going to speak anecdotally because I've watched this, it's in my backyard, and I've watched Olivia Beach grow from the first house to where it is now. And I can tell you, the homes that have the kids in them, well, they make some noise during the day, but they're very quiet at night. They are not the ones that are drinking and carousing.
Okay.
And we want them here. That is the ideal tenant for a vacation rental property. So I don't want to give them any reason not to come here.
Okay, if I can, let me summarize a little bit where we are and then go to the next point, okay? First of all, the items that we're discussing, beginning with the occupancy, are to deal with the, with the changing nature of a neighborhood that has opened up to VRDs, okay? And as it pertains to occupancy, what I am generally hearing is that, is that you like the Newport model of either a two plus one or a two plus two, with some exceptions in the case where it would be for children. Am I, is that what I'm, you're not voting, but is that?
No.
I'm trying to get to where we're going.
I agree with that.
With the parents though.
Yeah. And I have to say, I'm in favor of Counselor Sprague's idea and a little touch of Mr. Ward's there about the lake. How was that, Dick? Did I give a little bit?
Well, except I want to come back after Sprague if I can.
Be clear out of the way.
Wrong.
Are you all right?
Yeah, please. Mr. Sprague, it's not occupancy, but during your comments, you made the comment about you turning the west side of 101 into big VR zone. And then gravitated towards the idea of the, along the lake as well.
Yeah, it already has. That's the problem.
Okay, so my question is, I didn't get the joy as you guys did to sit through hearings about VR zones and all the testimony. And it seems to me that you did that quite a bit. And yet you chose not to turn it into a VR zone then. So what's different would be my question today versus yesterday?
The thing that's different is that we were not, at least I was not aware, of how the market had driven that area to be so proliferated with VRDs. I didn't know where they were all located until I saw the map. And that's when the realization hit that it's already happened.
So, Mr. Mayor, so again, the testimony of the residents scattered in between these marks didn't, you know, I mean, they must have swayed you at, at some point. Now they don't sway you because you see the density?
I am in sympathy with that because if I lived where someone lives who was remonstrating and saying they did not want the VRD next door, I would be in sympathy with that. But I go back to the fact that we have the problem. It's here. And I don't see any way that we can restore that area to residential neighborhoods without VRDs or with fewer VRDs. And so I think, I think it goes to the point where just about the majority has to rule in that case.
Well, and I would agree. You're not going to restore. But per my earlier question of the mayor and accessory use, trying to find some way to, because there obviously are people, because you heard them, living west of 101.
Certainly.
They came before you and talked, all this kind of stuff. And I'm betting they'll remain here. Or they'll sell out and move somewhere else, up to the east side if they can. But in the meantime, they too made an investment and had expectations. So whenever we're putting things on the table here, I'm trying to think about, you know, both sides. One, we talked about grandfathering and all this stuff, people who have invested in houses and VRDs and all this stuff. And, but I haven't heard a lot of discussion, well, how do we soften the blow for the person who bought the house as a residence in the proper zone, all that kind of stuff. And I know we're not going to go, you know, all the way back. And I would hope they would think that as well. But the occupancy touch seemed to be a nice give-up, so to speak, to a resident next door who's perhaps been suffering with 16 occupants. And now they look at it and say, well, it's going to be 12. You know, for humans, different, probably not a lot, help, but, you know, it's something at least you can point to and say, fewer people, one less car, who knows? So I would hope, as we're discussing, that we try to keep in mind is, you know, not just throwing them in the ocean, so to speak, and saying, you know, how can we soft, how can we make their life a little more pleasant?
Well, one of the things that was mentioned by the quote unquote pro VRD group was that the value of the dwelling is more expensive because it's rentable as a VRD. Well, those people living in that whole area west of Highway 101 then would enjoy the increase that may come because of the fact that they're living where it's outright used. And if they wanted to sell there, they could move to east side, although they would not be where they want to be, which is closer to the ocean. And I, like I said before, I don't think we're ever going to have all winners. So somewhere along the line, I think we have to, we have to decide that not everybody's going to win.
Well, our, our mission here needs to be give them a haircut rather than a scalping. And using the, I just call it the Newport plan, or it really does increase all the property value, all of it is able to be used for a VRD. And so...
I think part of it, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think part of it is, is how well do you enforce? You know, if, if you have a licensing and they're told, these are the rules, and they start violating the rules, then you pull the license. And they, it ends effectively there. And then, you know, or, you know, I mean, if they're doing a lot of things to offend the neighbors, then that's, that's a violation. And, you know, and, so therefore, you know, I mean, that, they can lose their license. They, so it behooves them to have their guests be as neighborhood friendly as possible. The other issue is that I lived for a number of years on Northwest 33rd and did quite a lot of walking around that area from about 20, 21st up to 36th. And there's a heck of a lot of homes there that are not VRDs, but they're not occupied all the time.
Right.
They are second homes. They may be owned by a church group. They may be owned by a business or by a large family. And you never know how many people are going to be there. And matter of fact, at one place that I lived up on, on Northeast Mast, there was a house on the corner which was owned by a church. And there would be anywhere from two people to 25 or 30 people in that house. It wasn't a VRD. It was their retreat house. So you never knew how many people were going to be there. If they were obnoxious, we'd go or knock on the door and say, you're being obnoxious, and they would quiet down. So, so there was very few problems. But by the same token, that house was not a VRD and it was not occupied all the time. So it's not really, quote, a neighborhood house. It's an empty house. And some of them can get pretty obnoxious with weeds during the summer and so forth.
And I agree, anecdotally, that's what I said.
And so, I mean, there's an awful lot of that, especially in the northwest section. There's a lot of those homes sitting around. And, and I think that we lose sight of the fact that these neighborhoods are not so much neighborhoods, many of them. It's because there aren't any VRDs there, they may be considered neighborhoods. And you know, may know the people when they come down for a month or two weeks here and there. But it's not a neighborhood in the traditional sense of a neighborhood. So I think that's another issue. But if you license a VRD and you adhere to enforcement of VRD, I mean, the rules that apply only to VRDs, but you also apply to the rules that apply to everybody in the neighborhood, I think you've kind of solved your issue. That's my opinion.
Ready to go to the next? No, and I agree. I think, you know, it's, I think I touched on this last time, was it's really the anxiety of not knowing. Now, if you, you know, if you just eliminate accessory use, that's a known. It's easy to deal with. And then if you say, I'm not comfortable with this, I'll go along with it for argument's sake, the people per house versus the cars per house. Because if we're saying more people equal more traffic, then we're really saying we don't want a certain amount of cars there, not a certain amount of people there. Because they're just going to get out and walk. What does it matter? So we're saying we need to look at that instead. I'll leave it at that. You go on. We've got to get moving.
Mr. Chandler, before you go.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Regarding, regarding the VR zone on the east side of the highway, Mr. Sprague, I don't think, if we had, if we imply, if we apply accessory use to the R 175 zone on the east side of the highway, then we wouldn't need a VR zone, I believe.
Could you say that one more time?
If we apply accessory use to the east side of the highway where we have 1.175 zoning status, we wouldn't need a VR zone. We'd have accessory use.
That would be correct.
Thank you. We don't need both of them.
I don't know that that needs to be called accessory use. It could be called a restricted area. You wouldn't have to put a number on it, but you can put a number on it, but...
Let me jump in real quick. If you guys will stay on the concept, okay, then the staff will come back with how to make your concept into reality. And then you can judge how we did it, if that's the right way you want to do that. And so I think that whether it's done through an accessory use, an overlay zone, or something else, we can find the methodology to make whatever it is you want to do to take place. But the direction we're looking for is really more that policy concept. We like this type of policy. We like that. Or we don't like this. And then we can figure out and come back with you on the recommendations on how we think it will work. Okay?
By the way, one other question. Do we know about the 12 VRDs that are on the east side? Do we know about the 12 VRDs that are on the east side? How many of those have already written or stated how many nights they were going to have on their application, or are they, are they not?
The ones that I have looked through, they don't have, they don't have a number of days, the limitation on it.
Okay. So at the end of, based on what I was talking about, when the title changed, then I would want those VRDs then to be restricted, to go back to where they have to re, somebody, the new owner reapplies and is restricted to whatever number of days we came up with.
The license is non-transferable.
Right.
Right. Okay. Carry on. Okay. Parking. This is actually a repeat of our last discussion, that we don't have anything new on this. These are some of the ideas that we have talked about. Again, if you recall from our last meeting, we discussed whether or not we have a parking problem in the city or we have a VRD parking problem. The conclusion is that we have a parking problem in the city and VRDs are one contributor to that problem. But they are not the only contributor. So we looked at some options that we have that, the first is simply to create more parking. Some of these things are short-term, some of these things are very long-term in their nature. One is to open our current overnight parking to non-RV parking. Allow stacking of cars on the VRD property. That's when you have three, more than two, that are parking behind each other. And then allow some on-street parking in front of the house if the right-of-way is wide enough. And then build more parking areas. Or lease excess capacity from, from others within the community. One method in, in order to help the VRDs so that they just don't, the new parking areas just don't get simply overrun, especially for day trippers and things like that, is to create a voucher or some validation system or use some sort of electronic parking meters. One of the ideas that we kicked around a little bit is that if we find, for example, that there are, and we're looking at creating more parking lots, there are some areas in residential areas, there are some lots in residential areas that may be suitable that we could lease, but the owner, but we don't want to create an asphalt parking lot for the owner in the future. If we loosened our parking restrictions so that you could have a road-based parking lot instead, or a paver-type parking lot, instead of just simply an asphalt parking lot. Other ideas that we have is improved signage, which would allow some short-term parking on the street, residential parking permits, physical improvements where the roads will permit it to allow angle parking instead of parallel parking. And then include in our education campaign, information about where a long-term parking is located. Now, I bring all of these up because it was interesting, as I have talked with different VRD owners, and I've said this, I, we've talked, where do people actually go to park if they have more cars? Well, no one has a really good answer, but they are finding parking places. Okay? It may not be in a parking lot, it may not be in front of them, but they are finding parking places when they, when they come. We have the same actually with all of our residential neighborhoods. The trend in the United States, and we're not an exception, is to have more cars and not fewer cars. And so you see people parking on the streets and, and sometimes they're in the right-of-way, sometimes they're not. But those are some of the ideas that we wanted to bring before you on parking, to get your input, areas where you would be willing to look at some changes and areas where you would not be interested in some changes.
Well, I guess my only concern is if we have identified areas where it is a problem.
All over the city, yes.
Well, I understand that, but some more than others.
Some more than others.
And some need stronger measures than others.
That's true.
So I would like something that says, here's where we've identified our largest need is.
I'd like to address that. If we do go to the occupancy, reducing occupancy, then reasonably we can say that we're likely to have less cars to park because there'll be less people there and less, of course, there are children, and you'll have toy cars.
That's a possibility, yes.
So really, you've reduced demand and also, and make parking less of an issue. And I think I've joined the rest of the people over 60 and forgot what I was going to say.
It's not an exclusive club. You're welcome in.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Regarding parking, Mr. Chandler, you talk about opening our current overnight parking. What is our current overnight parking?
Well, right now, we do not permit overnight parking in any of the city parking lots. There are, however, a small number. Most of our parking lots are well-used, but we do have a couple that are not and rarely have cars that are in them. For example, the best example is on Southeast 3rd. There's rarely more than one car ever parked in that parking lot. That's an opportunity of excess capacity, at least in that area, where if you created it to allow overnight parking in your public education program through some sort of voucher system or something like that, you could actually direct people to that parking lot. But it would require that, so, for example, if, if my family is coming to visit, we have more cars than are permitted at the VRD, we could direct somebody to that parking lot and their car could be left there while they enjoy all of the activities in the city.
And that would also...
So it would not just be overnight?
No, you mean the whole parking lot?
No. Your ability to park there would not just be over, you wouldn't have to move your car at 8:00 in the morning.
No, you would not have to move your car. That's the idea behind it, is that if you loosen our overnight parking restrictions, then it could, would be an opportunity for someone to park their car, leave it for a couple of days while, while they are staying in the VRD.
And that applies to part-time residents as well, people who are just using their home three, four times a year and have guests, it's not a vacation rental, they could make use of that also.
You could. One of the, you'll note that one of the things that we suggested, all of, parking is going to be your most expensive item that you're going to have to deal with. So a couple of options that we looked at is, for example, a voucher system, the same that you'll see in cities where if somebody comes in, they get a voucher from the business, the business is paid for that voucher and, and they can, or validate it, they can use it to validate it. You could do something like that. You can do electronic meters. You could do something that would enable you to create a revenue source to pay for this, because this would be your most expensive task that you would have before you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I have a concern about parking in some of the other parking lots that you mentioned. For instance, Southeast 3rd, that is isolated. There's not another house around that. All there is there is a pump station. We have enough problems with car clouts in public parking lots like the D River wayside. In a parking lot like that, I wouldn't even suggest that somebody parked there for three or four days. I would suggest that that car is going to be vandalized and, and, I'll just vandalize. One thing I think that we should allow, if our code does not allow it, is to, for people to expand their parking areas on their, on their dwellings. I know we have a certain amount of minimum and maximum for driveways, but if we could expand that, somebody might, who has a VRD, may have a front yard of grass or something, they could expand their driveway if, if our code would allow that. So they could actually park more cars where grass now is. I don't, I'm not sure if what our code says, but I don't know if that would be allowed. Richard, do you know offhand?
Well, I know there's, there's a restriction based on the number of bedrooms. So you have to have as many parking spots as you have bedrooms. Now, going over what you have and adding additional parking, I don't think has been a problem, except when you exceed the maximum coverage for the lot, which I think in a residential zone, it's like 50%.
There's the coverage and then there is the landscaping that would limit the amount of parking that you could create.
But we can change that, Ken.
You can change that.
Yeah. So there's a flexibility...
Particularly along the ocean, sorry.
There's some flexibility there then.
Yeah. Particularly when you could take a look at the oceanfront houses, there's just not...
There's almost nowhere to go.
Yeah, there's nowhere to go. So, you know, the question becomes, you know, are we going to be a little flexible? And because that, that oceanfront owner certainly has a large investment in their upper-scale, good money coming into the city and not a lot of trouble.
Well, and I will float an idea past you that's been presented to me by several vacation rental owners, is that they would be willing to pay for a patrol themselves. They would hire a service that would patrol these lots and these homes. And then, yeah, and then I think we need to look at certain streets. Now, again, I'm getting back just to my own property on Post. That's a double-wide street, it's supposed to have two bike lanes on it. It's like on this 30-degree hill that I've never seen a bike on, but you can't park on either side of it. And there's no point to restricting that on both sides. I just think we need to kind of look carefully, street by street, and say, could we allow it, or could we do some of these angle-in things and such?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Ron, what about skinny streets? Skinny streets...
You're talking about the skinny asphalt, but not a skinny right-of-way?
I'm talking about, like, my, my parents live in northeast Portland, and their streets are very narrow. In fact, and it's a high-end neighborhood, so it's, in order to go down the street if someone else is coming the other way, you have to go into someone's driveway. And they come out, and they do that on purpose. And the reason they do that is it keeps the traffic from going fast. And it's inexpensive. I mean, basically, you kind of crowd the streets a little bit. Do you, do you see any promise in that, any hope?
From my studies, in that, that is being used as a, just exactly what you're talking about, as a way to slow down traffic. Now, we do have that in a lot of our streets in our cities. It's not that the right-of-way is skinny, but the asphalt is skinny. And, and so it's difficult to go past cars without slowing down.
You mean narrow when you say skinny?
Narrow. Yes, I mean narrow.
They're the size of a fire engine.
Right. Yeah, right. I've seen those.
Yeah. Now, in the streets that I've been on, and all of the streets that I've been on, you can still pass, but it's tight. But it's not because the right-of-way is narrow, it's because the asphalt is narrow. And many of our streets have been designed that way. And that does create some parking opportunities in the rest of the right-of-way in front of homes. And as a matter of fact, when you drive around town, you see quite a bit. Most of the traffic parking problems that I see are when the asphalt is, or the, the right-of-way, there's not a big difference between the right-of-way and the asphalt. And so that you actually get a car that's partially out into the asphalt, causing some, causes some traffic hazards. But we do have narrow streets, but they're narrow because of the asphalt, not because of the right-of-way. But it is, again, the, the, throughout the country, it's been a trend. I've seen it more with planners that are pushing it, developers that are pushing it, than I have with cities that are actually adopting it. But it is a means in which you can slow down traffic.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
On parking also, I would, I would, I would certainly allow, and this would be true for full-time residents, as it would be VRDs, stacking in a driveway if there is the room. I don't see an issue with why you can't, if you have the room to park two cars behind your, you know, in front of your garage without encroaching into the street, I don't see an issue there, whether it, whether you're a full-time resident or if you're a VRD renter. I mean, that's just utilizing your driveway. So I don't see an issue there. And I think that that should be allowed, period, citywide.
I should point out that that, that is permitted with everybody except VRDs.
Well, I would say that...
In the case of a VRD, it's a licensing issue.
We need to, to do that then.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think that if you can park it on your property, you can park it on your property.
Okay.
My, my concern is to not encroach on the sidewalk rather than the street.
Right. That's right. Well, say, again, my example, up on Dune. Dune is a very narrow street. You can't pass side by side, yet there's no improvement on either side of the road. It's just grass. So could we use it now for parking? Sure, it makes sense. But once a sidewalk goes in, well, then you can't. But we're going to have to kind of address how we deal with that.
Okay. Next item we have is nuisance enforcement. We've discussed these items as well. Use a dispatch, use dispatch as a call center. And again, just to remind you of how we have envisioned that. So all calls would come into dispatch on their non-emergency calls. The dispatcher would then determine if it's a life safety issue. If it is, then they would dispatch the police. If it is not, they would send an email to the local representative of the VRD and copy the planning department, our employees that are responsible for that. The VRD local representative would have so much time, we don't have that number, to resolve the issue. And then our employee would, within a certain period of time, and the number we're using is a 24-hour period, confirm that the issue has been resolved. Okay? The other item that we discussed was hiring an additional VRD enforcer. As you know, our, our current enforcer is very active. He's done a great job, but he does work just 40 hours a week. And there are times when he is working that you may need somebody else. This is not something that I would anticipate we make a decision on right now, but instead incorporate this into the budget discussion for next year. And then finally, we discussed restructuring the penalties for nuisance violations. And the general feeling that I got from you was that we would issue a citation for unresolved nuisance violations, not just the fact that they received a call. Go ahead. Please.
The things that I've heard from the community, from the residents is, first of all, they feel uncomfortable making a complaint in their name. And it's a hard thing to do, and you don't want to start a neighborhood war because you're afraid, they're afraid, that the person that they complained about will know it was them, and it's going to be hard feelings. So, and also, they were concerned about the amount of time that it took to respond to their complaints. So if you've got somebody that's being a nuisance right there, they, they don't need it remedied the day after, they need it remedied now.
In, in several of the VRD ordinances that I have read through that have a provision similar to this, I've seen that response time is low as, I think the lowest I've seen is about 20 minutes. The longest is about half a day.
Well, I think, again, I would get back to the willingness of a lot of these owners to have their own private company handle this. So you could lessen that response time. It'd be 24 hours just patrolling, that's all they do, and responding to calls. It could be confidential. And then it doesn't have to be a, I don't think it would even have to fall under public records at that point.
One of the reasons that we had put in there for the dispatch is that currently there is no, there is no effective way to determine how well somebody...
Right. And I understand that, I was just throwing that out. But I do have a question about dispatch and not knowing their workload. But what happens during a busy time? Say, peak of summer, a lot of calls coming in, do we then get, do they get the opportunity prioritized and say...
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, we'll get back to you.
Oh, yes. And because it's a non-emergency number, the ability to leave a message is always there and it can respond to it. If they are busy on a life safety issue, that always comes first. And so when I've talked with our dispatchers about this, or our lead dispatcher and our chief, they felt that at this point at least, they would be able to, to take care of this and to handle this, and then over the time, measure on how successful they've been. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
In order to protect a property owner from nuisance complaints, and I'm talking about nuisance on the part of the complainer, it would seem to me that... nuisance on the part of the complainer, it would seem to me that we should know who makes the complaint, but keep that confidential, rather than say that you don't have to state who you are. Otherwise, we're not going to know who's complaining. Because I, I can see a situation where somebody is so upset about something in, in the neighborhood that they're just going to continue to complain until they think they get it done.
Serial complainer. Like those poor ladies who lost their maj-
In other words, the police, the, the dispatch could keep that confidential so they don't spread it out. Because if it goes back to the property owner, then, then the neighborhood war begins, if it hasn't already gone on.
Mr. Mayor? Sir? Mr. Chandler, you know, I like the nuisance enforcement or the call center concept. It seems targeted to VRDs exclusively. And I, I guess, to me, that's part of the problem, is, like parking, it's a city problem, you know, not a VRD problem exclusively. So I, I would hope that, you know, that, that thirty-day, sixty-day renter who's a nuisance can be called upon as well by the neighbor. And, you know, if we just change the wording as such, that, you know, it's, we're talking about making Lincoln City more livable for everybody.
And the part-time resident.
Right. Kind of that effect. And the other thing, I noticed in the brochure, and that, this is helpful, what I was wondering what an educational brochure looked like. But I'm, you know, city residents have the right to call a short-term vacation rental hotline to report violations. It's kind of a soft touch to calling the lease. So, I'm wondering, you know, since the mayor wants people fined and, you know, gone after if they do wrong, you know, let's see, why don't you call my Aunt Susie and tell them they're, they're noisy? I mean, this, I, I think you have to put some oomph here, that, you know, we're, we're warning you upfront, there's some rules, they're simple rules. You may be visited by the police.
As anyone would.
Yeah, exactly my point.
I think, and piggybacking on, on what Mr. Anderson just said, I think one of these kind of things should be going around to everybody, frankly, that you can call this number if you have an issue in your neighborhood, not just a VRD, but your next-door neighbor whose dog is barking at midnight, and you're trying to sleep because you have to get up at two o'clock in the morning. I, I think that these are the kind of things that, you know, if you have to hire an extra body to take those kind of complaints, or extra bodies, or share, I think it's well worth it if you, I mean, it may not, I mean, it depends on how many complaints you get, but if it looks like you're getting a lot of complaints citywide, then I think that it's worth hiring the extra person or persons to take care of that, to, to make sure that we are enforcing the issues for everybody. Because I, I think that's important. Certainly, one place I lived, there was a frog pond that was not well, or a pond that was not well-tended, and, and at night, it sounded like I was living inside of a swamp. And it was extremely hard to sleep. And I know I called the police many times and said, "Can you do something about the noise?" And they would go talk to the neighbor in charge, and finally, between the raccoons and other things, they frogs went away. You know, it, it was extremely difficult, we could not use our backyard. And it was just mainly because there was a bazillion frogs in there, all croaking.
We've got the same thing.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's very maddening. And I was a full-time resident, and everybody else right around me were full-time residents. My bedroom just happened to be next to the pond. So, I mean, and if it hadn't been the police visiting frequently, nothing would have gotten done. And I, I, I just think that those are, are important reasons to have someone who can respond. And if it's, if there is not, you know, like you were mentioning, a really, really busy time with, with dispatch, then there should be code enforcement officer or whatever, that that, that line can, or that call can be immediately shuttled to who would respond, one way or the other. So I, I think there are some creative ways to get around that, but I think it's a good idea, and I would be highly in great agreement with that.
Well, sure. You know, one thing we might want to consider, right now, as far as landscaping, you get your landscaping done, and they come and look at it if they do, and then you're done. And I've noticed, checking them all out, you know, over the years, noxious weeds become part of your landscaping, as do blackberry bushes. I would be in favor, we do have an aggressive repair and maintenance ordinance in this town that's equally applicable to VRDs and residences. I think we'd be far better served than trying to govern something that's transient, like someone's weed-pulling, whether or not we went to use that maintenance ordinance to, to govern not only the VRDs, but legally, would, actually, already legally it does, you know? We just don't enforce it. So if we're going to enforce anything, that's a great ordinance to enforce.
Well, a couple of things. Number one, frogs are delicious deep-fried, so-
These are little teeny tree frogs, they're not good, trust me.
One thing that I, I haven't heard addressed at this session, but we have before, and I just want to make sure it's brought up, is the idea of penalizing the right person, that if someone violates one of the rules of the city, say, a parking, that it's not held to the owner of the vacation rental, but it's the person who parked incorrectly, or that was creating the noise. Of course, there should be a complaint that, you know, the owner needs to address, but if there's going to be anything, like fines levied, I'd like to see it addressed to the person who committed the, the crime or misdemeanor, or whatever we're going to call it. And then, I guess, we're not really talking about landscaping, but that's a big bugaboo of mine, especially when I look at large developments. And I'm not picking on Olivia Veach, but they had to just throw a lot of plants in there. And I don't know that it was exactly the right plants for the place, and I just get concerned that we're just setting this artificial number without any thought for the future, what it's going to look like and such. But that's, that's for much later discussion. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, one last thing, on the, on the nuisance enforcement, I, I'm not, unless someone could really show me that it's necessary, I'm not in favor of layering in another person simply because of what we've been going through with our, our discussions. Let's see, I want to make sure I'm saying the right things here, if Mr. Appicello looks over it. As we were talking about the, the negotiations with, with labor and such, I just, the idea that our costs are going up, and up, and up, and up. And I just want to make sure that we're not adding more to that if we cannot do it. You know, we do have a police department that is tasked with enforcing many of these ordinances, and could we rely on them a little bit more?
That's the reason why I wanted to pursue that as part of the budget, so you can see how it fares against competing other financial interests.
Great.
The next item that we had is the public education. The first item that we had was the creation of a public education brochure. You have in front of you just a very rough draft of what one might consider. It's not meant to be the final, it's just meant to give you an idea of what could go into it. The second item that we wanted to consider, again, I've mentioned on several occasions how I believe our Channel Four is an underused resource. This would be an opportunity to, to create some commercial, infomercial types of things, instructing residents, or, I'm sorry, visitors to our community on, reminding them they're in residential neighborhoods, and these are the rules associated with it, and so forth. And then finally, the other thing that you had discussed last time was the changing of the quiet hours. Right now, our quiet hours begin at seven PM. Incidentally, I, since that time, I discovered, by looking through all of these different licenses, that the licenses say that it's from ten PM, ten PM to seven AM. So we do have a discrepancy between our ordinance and what we're putting on the licenses, so.
At first glance, and I know it's rough, but I just want to throw my two cents in, "Good neighbor" brochure, "Do not, do not, do not, do not." I want to make sure that we don't, you know, "Your full cooperation, strictly enforced, failure to comply." It's, okay, a little heavy-handed. Oh, by the way, welcome to Lincoln City. Just, I, I understand where we're going, but I would say maybe, I would ask, is anyone from the hospitality industry involved in writing this?
Not yet.
Okay. I would like to see that.
I think, I think the concept is a good concept.
Well, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
It's a, it would be a good thing that the managers of these properties can have available, either to mail out, when you mail out your reservation, or-
Absolutely.
You know, to have them there in the, the thing. And also, I think every city resident should get one of these, so they want to know what the rules are basically for them, too, you know? I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Where was I on this? Oh, one, one thing we haven't really talked about is the formation of a VRD's owners association. I think that would be wise to, to look at, just as we have hoteliers and restaurateurs and, and all that, that you have a central association that you could contact, who could help you formulate these things. Because I know, again, I haven't heard one person who hasn't said, "I would love," you know, they want to create an educational program, and they want to create a brochure and, and a little more structured system, because a bad owner's a bad owner, and it's a blight on everybody. Just like a bad bar owner is a bad bar owner, and a blight on all the other bar owners.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
When I look at this, I think for the most part, this, this idea is good. But I, and what, from what Mr. Anderson said, this does not really apply to other residents, full-time residents. And I, and I like the idea of, of the full-time residents having something like this, but it, it either means we have to alter this so that it's less, less specific and more general, or have two of these, one for the citizens and one for visitors.
It's a good start.
I don't know how, how it's best to proceed, but if I was a resident, I mean, as a resident, if I got this, it wouldn't mean anything to me, because first of all, it's for vacation renters. So, somewhere along the line, I think we need to take a look at that.
Mr. Mayor? Sir? Could you clarify for me, your, you, your comment around association education?
Right.
I couldn't tell from your comments whether you saw that as a role of government forming an association?
No, sir. But recognizing it.
Recognizing?
Recognizing association, right.
Good, that's, that's what I want to-
Just like Bama, you know, recognize Bama as a source of information.
There used to be a hotel, hotel motel lodging, or a lodging association, which, I think, is trying to be revived.
I totally agree with that.
I'm well, I'm well aware of trade associations, so I, I would welcome the trade-
Yeah.
-getting off it-
Absolutely.
...and creating itself, yes.
Yeah, and then you could have a central spokesperson, and I think it'd be beneficial to everybody.
Cool.
Okay. Time for some decisions. So let me talk a little bit about the process and what we, again, I'm going to come back to what our goal of our meeting was. Third goal was to receive direction from you, so the staff can begin preparing ordinance amendments and begin the public comment process.
Ron, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump back just briefly on the quiet hours discussion. I'd like to have someone talk about the decibel level, because I think that was just way too low. But that's, that's it.
Do people know what decibel level the noise is, or would be at? There's no way to know.
Well, there is, yeah, and we have those. And the problem is that, right now, it's set at basic conversation level. So if you're on your deck after ten, having a conversation, you can be fine. That's all I'm saying, it's really low. We, we worked it out with Richard out in the hallway, with his decibel meter, if that's the actual word for it. And it was, it was conversational, it was too loud.
I don't want to be squelched at ten o'clock in the evening.
Tell you, I think, that's all I'm saying, is we need to just kind of look at that. That's it, thank you.
What we're hoping to do is that, is that from this meeting, we will enter really into the public input process. As you know, some of these, or, if there are changes, well, we'll come back to where we go from here, but I want to just mention the process. Any changes to the zoning ordinance has to go to the planning commission, so that they can review those, and then give you their input and their recommendation onto that. So there are advertising requirements. There's the time it will take for the staff to put together any ordinances, amendments that we, that we have. And it presents, and then ultimately, the recommendation or the, an ordinance will come to you, and of course, then you will go through your public input process of holding public hearings. The time that it will take between now and when it really goes to the planning commission, if there is any land use change, presents an opportunity for us to, again, take it on the road. So one of the things that I'm asking is that you'll allow me and Richard Townsend, again, to hold a series of meetings with neighborhoods and interested parties to discuss the items that you are going to be recommending to us, that you move forward on. It will give an opportunity for people to hear what it is directly from the city, instead of through others. It will give them an opportunity to prepare any comments they may have, so that when there are public hearings, they'll be able to come and present it based on the information they receive. So, part of what I'd like to accomplish today is to get that approval from you to, again, take it on the road with whatever it is you're going to direct us to do. So, we're, we're back to the beginning question, that is kind of, it's, it's the first question that has to be answered. You don't have to come up with one answer, you don't even have to come up and say, "This is the direction you could direct us to prepare options that would come back to you." So for, and that question is, should the city eliminate the accessory use provision? Companion to that is, should it eliminate it in some areas, but not in other areas, as we discussed earlier today? As I'm, and, and so that's the first, those, those are the questions that are before you today. And as I mentioned, you can give us a clear direction of saying, "Leave it as is," and then that'll lead to some other questions. Eliminate it everywhere in the city, or eliminate it in parts of the city, but not in other parts. And, and so I will turn this to you guys for a discussion on, to give us some direction. As I mentioned, you can give us one clear direction, or you can say, "Bring back different options that can then be looked at by the planning commission and can be presented to the public, and then ultimately come back to you."
Okay, well, if I can kind of just summarize in my mind, so we've got the options of eliminate accessory use outright throughout the city. Eliminate it in certain areas, but not others. And then also, we talked about the sewer-ing angle around the lakes, so we wouldn't have it there unless they were sewered, right?
I do believe that that is already in place.
For a license.
For the licensing, yes. I believe that is already in place.
And then what other option was there? That was it, right? Fully, half, or stick with, yeah, okay, all right. So in my mind, I, I, I just, I think, and I've said it before, I think we're just going to keep chasing this, this accessory use limitation around and around and around, when, you know, for twenty-five-plus years, we haven't really even enforced it, and I don't know that it's ended. I just like the idea of getting rid of it, for me. I, I'm willing, as Mr. Anderson said, to, you know, give a little bit, if, if, if we need to give it up on the east side, but, again, nobody wants it on the east side, so whatever. But it just seems, it's a clean way to start this discussion. As far as the time limitation goes, one thing I would like to talk about, especially in conjunction with your roadshow, was that the word you used?
Take it on the road.
Take it on the road, thank you. That's the end. Take it on the road, thank you. That's the Antiques Road Show.
Take it on the road.
Is, I'm still concerned about this 90-day limitation right now, because we're still seeing, seeing sales fall apart, and we're seeing harm, I think in my mind, economic harm to areas, when we're not even talking about a 90-day anymore. And I would just kind of like to get, say, let's just suspend that for now, until we at least come to a decision on what we're going to do with this, just so we don't keep.
Let me, let me point out something that you, you may feel that time is of the essence because of that, but, but you cannot create land use policy by simply changing that without it going through the proper process. And, and then your planning director has simply done what he is supposed to do, and that is, he has defined it and justified his, his definition of that. So, to do what you're asking, Mayor, you need to adopt, you need to change the ordinance.
Okay.
You just can't simply do that without changing the ordinance.
So, the ordinance was to give him the authority to establish?
No, that's what it already says.
Right, that's, I just, yeah, okay, got it.
Okay.
Well, that's just my concern.
Your Honor?
Sir?
It's, I just wanted to remind you all, this is a work session meeting, so if we're looking for people to make motions, I don't think we're taking any actions.
Oh, no, no, nobody's making a motion.
No.
But thank you.
No, we're not. It's just to give us a sense of where you want to go.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Mr. Chandler, could we have a draft ordinance that would take into consideration the majority of what we've talked about today, and then we can take that and just cut and splice and do what we want to do with it?
Well, what I would suggest is that, is that you allow it to go through the public process before you, before you go in and come up with a final product. Again, if it's a land use changes, you're required to have it go through the planning commission.
I understand.
Everything, everything that we have discussed right now has just been between staff and city council. The public needs to have an opportunity to hear this, to be able to comment it, on it, to come back to you. There, there may be changes that you find in whatever you come up with, that as the public comments on it, you might go, yes, okay, I agree with that, or I don't agree with that. But we need to go through the process, so that you'll get the best document. So, again, what I'm really hoping to get is a sense of direction. The staff will come up with what we think is, will accomplish that. We will certainly send that to you. Again, as I asked, we'll take it on the road and, and present it to the community, and then have the public hearings.
Okay. Then were you comfortable with our, what we talked about with the time limitation option? Is that enough for you tonight?
Well, I'm hearing, well, let me recap of what I am hearing, okay? I am hearing that, I'm not even going to say a majority, I am hearing that, let's consider eliminating it. I'm also hearing, let's consider eliminating it in some areas, but not all of the areas. If that is the direction that you want us to go, we will prepare the options in the ordinances that would allow you to do that. Now, what I, what I have not heard as much is keep it and then define it as a number.
What, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Can I just keep a question before I, at my senior moment? And we're not even discussing the, the villages within this anymore, right?
No.
Okay, great, please.
Only as it's related to what it is zone.
Right.
What, to, to take what you were just saying, the, the summary of what I was perceiving was that we pretty much decided, or not decided, we pretty much agreed that the accessory use language should go away, that we were possibly thinking that VRDs should be allowed west of Highway 101, not east of it, except right around the lake, and that, that most of the, the enforcement issues that we had talked about was an issue of enforcing the, the rules and regulations essentially for everybody, so that we're all governed by the same thing, and pretty much adopting, I think most of us were kind of leaning toward adopting the Newport model for the VRDs of two and, two per bedroom plus two, and establishing some sort of a call, or a complaint department, a call center, whatever, for not only VRDs, but complaints all over the city for violations of noise and, and parking and so on, and also exploring the concept of using other areas as parking, long-term parking, and/or looking at narrowing some streets to create more on-street parking in all neighborhoods, not just VRD neighborhoods. That's kind of what I was hearing as a, you know, summarizing.
And I had thrown in, I'm not sure if the rest of the council agree with it, but the idea that maybe we want to encourage private companies to be involved in, in patrolling.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Ryan, one other thing, on the east side, I was suggesting that, that there be no VRD. I was not suggesting that. I was suggesting that we have a 30-day limit on everything on the east side, rather than nothing other than around the lake.
Than just, but except around the lake?
Except around the lake. Around the lake, that would be something different, but I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I misstated what you were saying.
And then I think we need to get back to the, we, east goes real east, once we get to the north end of the highway.
Yeah.
So, we want to make sure that we're going straight up, so we're, I, I.
It's on the other side.
So, essentially Logan Road.
Not the villages, though, right?
Yeah.
And I agree with that, yeah.
And eliminating the villages, totally.
Right. I agree with that.
Yeah. That was kind of the summary of what I was hearing.
I would agree with that.
So, I'm curious what you excluded.
The east side?
No, no, no. Is, didn't you just include, didn't we just throw to Mr. Chandler, eliminating the accessory use?
Right.
And keeping it on, on, eliminating on the west side and keeping
Well, it's not.
It on the east side, but, but limit the timeframe.
No, we're just, we're licensed, going to licensed VRDs. Drop the accessory use. It's hard to define, and nobody's defining it anyway.
So, it restricts to 30 days, rather than trying to go through the, the defining of accessory use?
Right.
Okay, so there's, there's my question. I don't understand accessory use that says 30 days.
There isn't.
It doesn't.
Understand. We're working on an option here. What I hear in your proposal, you could, could eliminate accessory use on the west side, keep accessory use on the east side, but define it as 30 days, except for around the lake. That's one, I think, one way. I'm kind of looking, versus you're saying, just put it in a, somehow a license that say, get rid of accessory use everywhere, and with some kind of a license provision just for a certain geographic area that says 30 days.
That takes it out of land use.
Let me, let me jump back in here. If you'll stay on the concept, we'll come back with how to do that, because I do know there are some legal issues that we'll have to deal with, and I will need to consult with our attorney to make sure we don't violate any legal.
And I was just summarizing what, what I thought we said.
So, when you talk about, instead of saying accessory use, use the frame time limitation. No time limitation in some areas, but some time limitation in others. And then we'll, then we'll come back with the recommendation on how to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chandler, so I'm, I'm good with that, because I'd, I'd like to continue that discussion and see what it looks like, so whatever staff does. At the same time, don't we currently have, we have accessory use everywhere that yet needs to be defined? So, to answer your, your question, if, if we're not able to meet consensus on the first proposal, the existing ordinance is there, in place, and just needs to be defined with night.
That's right. If, if you decide that you do not want to eliminate a time limitation, you want to keep our, essentially our existing ordinance, and the next question you'll be dealing with is, who is going to define what that is? Will you define it, or will you just simply allow the staff to continue to define it? So, that would be the next question.
Oh, in my mind, it has to be the council. This is going to affect too much of the public to have just one person making that decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir? So, Mr. Chandler, how long do you foresee this process taking with us coming to some type of a consensus until it comes out to be a part of licensing? How long do you see that?
I'm going to turn to our recorder for a little bit of help. For the planning commission and the city council, how much time does it take to do the advertising?
There's a 35-day notice to DLCD for a land use ordinance that we have to give prior to the first public hearing before the planning commission. So, that's, that's the start of the process. You give notice when you're going to have your hearings. Plus, we have Measure 56 notice that has to go out. I have this, I don't remember, I don't do the notices, but I have a feeling it's like 45 days. So, there's a significant advance time, and that's assuming you have an ordinance drafted. And remember, we initiate changes to land use ordinances under Chapter 1788 by coming to the council and asking for a motion to amend the ordinance like we did at the last meeting. And you also recommended I bring back an ordinance that lets the planning director do that, but until we have that done. So, you have to start with that, go, come to council with a draft, initiate the change, give the notices to DLCD and to the affected property.
On those notices, are those concurrent? It's not one and then the next one?
Yeah, it's, they're concurrent.
Okay.
But so, you, you have
Five days.
You have time there of where you're going to be at least 35, 45 days out before you go to the planning commission, and then you have to come to the city council, and then you adopt an ordinance. And then it's 30 days before that's effective.
So, you're looking at probably six months.
I think four to six months is reasonable for a land use procedure.
Yeah.
So, that'd be good, get that knocked out before summer.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, is right now, we have a current, current ordinance that's in, in effect. And so, what are we doing with that? Last year, you, the council directed that the ordinance be enforced. I pointed out that the enforcement mechanism is a land use enforcement mechanism, which is one of two options. The planning director could determine that, based on evidence, he believes that someone is violating the accessory use limit. And under the ordinance, any violation of the provisions be 178050B is enforceable through revocation process, which could be revocation of your license and land use approval. We would follow land use process. The planning director would make the decision, give notice. An appeal could be taken to the planning commission, or the planning director would refer directly to the planning commission for a hearing. The question before the planning commission would essentially be, is the number of days that this person is renting a violation of the accessory use limit? It's 300 days more than what is incidental and subordinate to the main use. They answer that question. It's subject to appeal to you and then to Luba. So, when we're talking about occupancy limitations, do we skirt much of that land use? Again, the, the current ordinance provides for the accessory use limit, and that's the enforcement mechanism. And occupancy limit is not outside of the, we have a current Luba appeal, with someone appealing an occupancy limit, okay? So, we, we, it's not something that, again, I don't think it's properly before Luba, because I don't think it's a land use decision, because earlier this year, the Land Use Board of Appeals said, our license ordinance is not a land use ordinance. But nevertheless, it doesn't mean they can't file it, and we can't be burdened with an appeal. So, I think occupancy limits will engender appeals, just like daily limits for a number of nights, whatever. But the process would be shorter? Well, it's still a Luba appeal at this point, but the ordinance for licenses says the license goes by writ of review to the circuit court, which is oftentimes longer than the Land Use Board of Appeals.
What's next?
I guess if there are, is there anything else that you want to give us direction on, or with the synopsis that I heard from Council Ryan, do we know where we're going?
The public education was clear, and you didn't really talk about a commercial to be shown on four, but I guess that's kind of something we'd get to later, right?
I'm sorry, Senator.
So, you've got a public service commercial to be shown on Channel Four.
Yeah, that's something we would do.
Yeah.
I, I understand you're not taking any action at this meeting, but I, I would like to point out that there was a certain amount of throw-the-baby-out-with-the-bath-water aspect of the ordinances that were rejected in May. Ordinance 22 and ordinance 23 had things in it that everybody agreed to, like changing the landscape requirements to make it, make them consistent, for example. At some point, we may want to go through the things that are in ordinance 23, and, and some of the things in ordinance 22, which you, we may all agree, kind of like low-hanging fruit, of course, we should change this. And, you know, the, the fact that it got tossed out was really just because I didn't write 16 ordinances, one change for each, one ordinance for each change. So, I'd suggest that maybe at a future meeting, we key that up for action.
Councilman Ryan has had a question.
I question having to go, go out and do another road show when you've already done one, and then there would be a public hearing because of the creation of the ordinance. Would that, would not that provide the opportunity for everyone to know what's going on?
Now, one of the things that, that, one of the reasons I like going out and discussing with people is because then they are getting information directly from the city, and we can answer their questions. One of the potentials that you have is that you will, you'll have people who'll be spreading information that's not accurate. And, and I think we do the city a disservice when we don't go out and tell people what is actually going to be considered by the city council. I do not believe it would lengthen the process, because it can be done during that, during the time period easily, but it gives us an opportunity to go out and to answer questions, explain exactly what is going into it. It also gives us an opportunity to go out and explain the alternative. For example, if, if the council were to decide to do nothing, or if what you ultimately adopt is overturned again, then we will live by the ordinance that we have now. And it's important for people to understand exactly what that means. And so, it gives us an opportunity to explain, to explain the city's position, rather than having someone else explain what they think we mean.
Mr. Chandler, my email has been constant with people upset with things that they had read, and that just weren't accurate. And there's a lot of that going along. There's mailings going out that have inaccurate information. I would like the, the staff to prepare some type of report that has accurate information regarding things that we have done. And since we have all of the email addresses of the VRDs, I think it would be helpful if those were sent out to the VRD owners, and particularly, don't mean to put you on the spot here, if it was signed by our mayor, that this is, this is what's happening, folks. So, there wouldn't, we would stop short that series of misinformation that are, that are going up. And it's really not productive. It's contrary to the democratic process, I think. So, that would be my, I don't know if that feeling would.
No, and I, I got to agree. But it gets back to something I'd said before, is there's a huge anxiety level when you're talking about an investment in, in your future, whether it's as simple as, you know, you just want to make a few bucks, or you want to have a legacy for your children. It, there's a lot on the line, and that's causing anxiety. And when you have anxiety, you get a lot of bad information. So, I'm, I'm all in favor of saying, hey, this is, this is where we're at, this is, this is what is, and I have absolutely no problem signing that, yeah. If that's the will of the council. have absolutely no problem signing that, yeah, if that's the will of the council.
Okay. I guess I'd just, again, recommend that any action items we take at the next regular meeting as opposed to action.
Absolutely, yeah, no, not making a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I think I have another direction you want us to go? I'm sorry, Councilor Ryan.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chandler, I trust you will see that the proposed ordinances comply with the zoning code, the city comp plan, city housing goals, and the order in land use planning goals?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's that? Roger, thank you all.
Yeah, I know it's rough because I've made the comments. But, you know, why I really, and you.
But that's where they got it. Yeah, that's the word for it.
See, that's why I really think it's important, though, that, who's used the wrong words, and I apologize.
I haven't really, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, yeah, know the right words.
You've got tons of photographs, haven't you?